Those of you who are through the teams, can you raise your hand if you can hear me, please? Thank you.
Going to go ahead and call this Monday, November 18th, meeting of the Whitefish City Council to order. Just for the record, Councilor Sweeney is excused tonight, and I would like to extend a big thank you to Frank for filling in for me the last several meetings. Very much appreciated. We will start with our pledge of allegiance. Chris, do you mind leading us tonight?
(inaudible)
We'll move on to item three on our agenda, which is communications from the public. Just an FYI, we do not have any public hearings advertised for this evening, but if you are here to speak on item seven, eight, or nine on the agenda, now would be your opportunity. Any communications from the public. Chris.
Good evening. Chris Schustrom, 504 Spokane Avenue. Two hats wearing this evening. First, I helped coordinate the winter decorations for town as part of the Whitefish Shines Decorations Committee, and the decorations will be hung this coming Sunday, November 24th. And volunteers are always appreciated and welcome and should meet at the corner of Third Street and Central Avenue at 8:00 a.m. to help prepare the decorations. This is the 75th year of this all-volunteer community project, which is pretty great. And pretty great timing because we'll be hanging 29 newly refurbished historic snowflakes in the parking lot across from Central School, all the way down Spokane Avenue and on the poles that have the brackets up Baker Avenue. So we're pretty excited about that. And we really appreciate the continued partnership with the city and the Parks Department and Craig and Public Works. And now switching over to my hard Whitefish hat, I just wanted to let you know that the downtown sidewalk cleaning partnership that was created during COVID with Dana and Craig continues to go well. The fall 2024 cleaning took place in October. Almost all businesses and sidewalks on Central Avenue participate, as well as the city property sidewalks, and we've added almost all the business sidewalks on Baker Avenue from Third Street north to Second Street and also north of First Street. So this is another great partnership that we have, and Craig has been great to work with. So, I mean, even following up with businesses who, there was a stain that just didn't want to come up. We did everything we could to get it. So, yeah, everybody's on board, so it's been a good thing. So, thanks very much.
Thanks very much, Chris.
You bet.
Appreciate all your efforts as well with the decorations, et cetera. Further communications from the public? Daniel?
Hello, Mayor, councilors. I wanted to give you just a little update on what we're up to at Housing Whitefish and just kind of forecast a little bit for you. So the Whitefish Rental Assistance Program, we currently have 45 approved applications, and we have about five that are currently pending. There are 94 people living in those households, 40 of which are children. So far, we've committed just about $180,000 in funds, so 100 from the city, we've raised 100 ourselves, and we'll be asking for the second half of the city's payments for here pretty soon for that $300,000 budget. Our average payments are $316 per household, average age is 36 years old, and people have been in town on average nine years. Starting to paint a picture, I think when I tell folks about this program, I think people tend to think, oh, that's the barista, the bartender, but I like to say the average person is 36 years old, been in town nine years, and works over at the hardware store. So if we're starting to think about who this program is serving, there are 20 single-parent households that are also recipients in the program. There are 38 employers who have employees in the program, so there's a couple overlap, 35 different landlords. So we're starting to see some good reach in the program, and we're looking forward to continuing to grow the program. One of our asks, and I know that we've been talking about asking for more money for this program to help continue, we'd like to align our program year with the fiscal years. So we asked for money, and you guys gave it to us last January, and so it kind of is bleeding into kind of messing up our program years and fiscal years. I think we'll have about enough money to get us through the first six months of next year, or second half of the fiscal year with our remaining budget. And then we'd like to make an ask for FY '26 and hopefully a little beyond, so that we can just make a couple of year commitments so that we know what funds we're raising and where we're going. We know that there are some funds left over in the Affordable Housing Fund right now for FY '25, and just kind of the way that the fiscal years have fallen, we could certainly ask for those funds, but I don't think we'd actually be using them until FY '26. And so just wanting to be cognizant that there are other things going on in the city, and we don't want to just take all those funds and hold them. So certainly, we would take them, but we're going to wait and just make a more comprehensive ask a little bit later in the spring for that program. We've also been working on a three-year strategic plan. This summer, we came out of a lot of conversations with donors about our Alpenglow project, and we really heard some feedback that people wanted to hear what we would like to accomplish. So we'll be looking forward to sharing that high level. It's really nothing new. We want to continue growing our program. We think that within three years, we can be serving about a half of all eligible households for this rental assistance program. I think we're currently serving about 12%. And how I got there is I looked at how many jobs there are in the city. So in the housing needs assessment, that's like 7,300 or so. You go further off of that, how many are commuters, so how many people are commuting to town, and then how many are just residents? How many are then renters? How many of those are cost burdened? And then how many of those are below the median? And that gets you to about 400 households that are eligible right now for our program. So starts to put a number, there's probably a good plus or minus on either side there, but it starts to get a ballpark. So we think that in three years, we could be serving close to 200 households. To do that, that's going to be about $750,000 if we were to serve all of those households at once. So we are going to look to grow our philanthropy and grants, but would also, of course, love some more support from the city too moving forward there. Also, part of that, of course, is completing the Alpenglow Two project. Right now, we're sitting about 65% to 70% of that project funded. We hear back on a grant from the Federal Home Loan Bank of Des Moines in December, which is $1.3 million. So if we're successful in that, that'll bring us closer to 85% of the way there. And so we're pretty confident that, you know, that'll get us over the edge, and then it's depending, I think it's all loose with estimates here, but, you know, about $500,000 to $750,000 to fill the gap, which we think that if we can go to the community and say, hey, this project is 85% of the way there, can you help us fill this gap? It's a little bit better than saying, hey, we have $2 million to get there. So we hear back on that in December, and we're really hopeful that we'll be successful. If not, then we're going to kind of go back and do some more ideas in figuring out how to get that project over to the finish line. But, yeah, that's just some updates from us and been working with staff to think about more coordinated ask for the rental assistance program specifically in the springtime in preparation for FY '26 budget process.
Any questions for Daniel? Rebecca?
Yeah, I like your plans. It sounds really good. Just wondering, so you did get the money from the trust fund, the state trust?
The multi- trust multifamily homes program, yes.
And how much was that again?
So we are currently approved for up to 2.5 million. We did go ask, go back and ask for up to 2.9 million for that grant, or for that loan, rather. Getting a little high level, so there's debt coverage ratio for, you know, anybody in the finance. So for that loan, we have to meet 1.15, the debt coverage ratio, and so it kind of limits how much we actually are able to take out of a loan. So currently, with the income that we're going to be receiving from that project just through rent, we can only actually take about a $2.2 million loan. If we change our AMIs to be a little bit higher, which is what we're asking right now, at least to go back to the state, have a little bit higher AMI on average, we can have a larger loan, and we'll be able to cover that with more income. So it's a little bit nitty-gritty in terms of the affordable housing finance, but right now, approved for 2.5, but probably can only access about 2.2. We'll see.
And you're still thinking about starting building in 2026?
If we are successful in this grant with the 1.3, I'd like to push and see if we could actually start breaking ground in '25. That's ambitious, so I think that realistically, excuse me, if we are successful in receiving that grant, then we will be kind of going all, you know, all ahead to try to raise and close that gap. Again, if we're not successful in that grant, then it's going to be, I don't want to put a timetable on there to set expectations, just, you know, need to figure out a little bit more. And I think we'll, of course, it's a matter of when this will get built, not if, it's just figuring out the critical path to get it done.
Then have you had any other, any further discussions about taking over the snowlot as a development group for Housing Whitefish versus Whitefish Housing Authority? Are you guys still kind of wondering about that?
You know, that's always a little bit of a question. I mean, the Housing Authority is certainly working. Right now, they are continuing to lead that project. We are happy to help, and we're still having conversations about, you know, if there's more, but for right now, there's no plans for Housing Whitefish to take that on.
They're still doing it, okay.
You know, so they're still working. So I'm not sure on all the details on their side, but we're happy to help and figure out if there's a role for Housing Whitefish, but, you know, there's stuff going on there.
Yeah, thank you. Sounds good.
Good political answer. Steve?
I've been, I don't really have a question, I just want to say, thanks for all the hard work you're doing. It's really impressive to hear how far we've come in such a short amount of time.
Absolutely.
And I look forward to hopefully seeing some things that are even bigger than or different than rental assistance that I know you're working on, so.
Yeah, we know that this is a shorter-term solution. There are some other programs that we've been thinking about, and really in tandem with the city's roadmap. And so one is the short-term rental conversion. Knowing that there's the short-term rental enforcement going on, we think there's a good opportunity to come in behind and partner and say, hey, you might have an illegal short-term rental, how can we work to rent it long-term? So I think there's an opportunity there, especially, it's not in the city, but with the new Big Mountain Resort District, I think there could be an opportunity up there. So that's one program. We're also getting a lot of calls about emergency rental assistance, and there's a pretty major gap there. We're not quite ready to dive into that because it kind of opens up a whole different ballgame in terms of the needs of the community that we're serving there. But, yeah, we'd really like to get into some longer-term building and securing more projects, and so that is part of our plan, certainly, to secure more property, continue building, and working that side as well.
Further questions for Daniel? Daniel, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate the update. Thanks, Chris. Kim, we have no public hearings this evening, but do you have anything to comment on related to your letter? Or we can call you up later, whatever your preference is. Perfect.
So, right now, I'm just Kim Murray-Saki from 1329 Baldi Galoup in Kalispell, and I'm here as a citizen requesting for your interest and support on a, something that will impact the entire county. It is the funding related to House Bill 819, which is money that the Montana, 2023 Montana Legislature set aside for housing for the entire state. They set aside $50 million. 4.5 million of that is to come to Flathead County. It requires something called a CRO, a Community Reinvestment Organization, and each county to get their apportioned part of this $50 million is required to come up with a one-to-one match. And that does not mean that the county itself has to come up with four and a half million dollars. It means that the CRO, the Community Reinvestment Organization, needs to find that match. So potentially, there is $9 million to be used for housing in Flathead County. But the county commissioners need to choose a CRO to work with, and they need to approve it, and they need to do so by the end of this year. And currently, there seems to be some question about whether that's really needed here. I've got two flyers that I've shared with your staff in hopes that you might want to read more about this because it's a little complicated. But the CRO that is, the organization that is proposing to do this is Neighbor Works Montana, and they have 25 years of housing finance experience, and they would run it as a nonprofit, and they would go out and get the $4.5 million match from private investors. And it actually won't benefit my organization that I work for at all because it's a different mechanism. It's just another tool in the toolbox, and it actually will benefit some of our partners that are trying to find different ways of making housing more affordable, or homeownership more affordable. The three-minute elevator pitch of how it works is the, anybody who wanted to purchase a home that was under 140% area median income would go to their local lender, and the local lender would lend them up to 70% of the price of the purchase of the home. The other 30% would come from the CRO, and that would be a second loan, and it would be 0% interest, and it would not be, there would be no payments required until the home is sold. So basically, it's just a mortgage that's sitting out there for 10 or 20 years or until you sold the home, at which point you would have to pay it back. So the idea is that a $500,000 home would effectively have a $350,000 mortgage, but that money wouldn't just disappear. When the house was sold, the 30% of, the 30% second loan would be paid back to the CRO, and the people who bought the home, under the current regulations from the state legislature, would be allowed to appreciate 1% annually on the purchase of the home. All the extra, let's call it the windfall, money would also go back to the CRO. They would pay a reasonable return on investment to the investors who, at this point, maybe had a 10- or 20-year investment. But they would also then take any extra funds, put it back into the organization, and re-loan it out. So it's, it's an accumulating, growing asset for the community. So that's the long and short of it. There's no risk to the county's expenses. I encourage you and anybody who's interested to reach out to the county commissioners and express support for this bill. Thank you very much.
Has this gone to a vote yet at the commissioner's office?
I'm sorry?
Has this gone to a vote yet at the commissioner's office?
No, the commissioners do not want to put it onto their agenda until they've heard from the public that it's important.
So a letter from the city of Whitefish would be important?
Yeah, and, and just average, everyday people who would benefit from it.
Ben?
Is county funding the only way to do this? Like, what if any of the municipal governments wished to participate in this?
I think that the way the legislature set it up was that each county had to, has to approve it, even though they're not actually providing the money for it necessarily. Thank you.
Steve?
Just a comment. I think we should, as a council, be careful about communicating with the commissioners on this as a council, and I think our time would be better spent emailing them or writing a letter to them individually. We don't have the greatest reputation with them, and I think, from what I have heard, because this has come through our school district as well, they, they don't want to hear from entities, they want to hear from real people. So I would just caution us to, as to whether we write a letter as a council or as individuals. We should all do it individually as well.
Good advice. Thanks, Eve. Further questions?
If you have 20-year-olds who might want to buy a house in the next 10 years, those would be the right people.
Rebecca?
Are they taking public comment, though, down at the, when they're holding session?
Public comment is Tuesdays and Thursday mornings at 8:45 a.m.
Thanks very much, Kim.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Further communications from those in attendance? Michelle, how about anyone online? Any volunteer board reports from the audience? Michelle, anyone online? How about the council? Rebecca?
Yep, the tree committee met, and we decided what trees are going to go along Caro. And then the detention pond at Riverside Park, we removed a lot of willows that were dangerous and breaking apart with big storms, and so in the spring, the committee will decide on that new planting.
Thanks, Rebecca. Steve?
Yeah, the community development board will meet this Thursday at 5:00 p.m., and we will be discussing the Vision Whitefish 2045, we'll be discussing the demographics preamble or the beginning to that chapter, so if anybody would like to come and weigh in on that.
Thank you, Steve. Not seeing any other volunteer board reports, we'll move on to the consent agenda. You do have the items as well as the November 4th and 14th, 2024 meeting minutes enclosed with the packet. Rebecca?
I'd like to make a motion to accept, but I would like to, I don't know what you call it, pull off ordinance number 24-12 for an amendment.
Let's address that amendment on 24-12 first before a motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
All right. I'd like to amend the ordinance related to the resort tax to include livestock medicine and pet medicine. No, just in addition to something.
Point of order, are we taking this item out of the consent agenda to rediscuss the ordinance?
Yes, we are discussing it now. I'm a little unclear as to what you're requesting. Perhaps that's because I was not at the meeting when this came through.
Yeah, we, we had a conversation about, Dana's probably better at explaining this, we had a conversation about removing pet food and livestock food from a luxury item and turning it into a non-luxury item that's no longer taxed at the 3%. And then I got some feedback from one of our constituents that also wanted collars and leashes to be included as a necessity, not a luxury, but Dana felt like we shouldn't add that because pet supplies could contribute to our resort tax, and it's quite variable. But she did bring up pet medicine as something that would not be taxed, and then I thought we should add in livestock medicine for Frank. So just... Well, he has horses.
Can you rephrase your requested changes, please?
I'd like to add livestock medicine and pet medicine to the, let's see, what section is that? I just looked it up. Sorry. It's on, I think it, page 457, is it?
Can you just say to the exempt list?
To the exempt list.
And that does not include feed?
It does. We did that last time.
Okay, thank you.
So if you're okay with it?
I'll second the motion.
I'll take that as a motion, seconded by Councilor Quinell. We'll move on. Ordinance 24-12 first. All those in favor, please raise your hand for the text amendments. All that's opposed, like, sign, and that motion does carry unanimously. Now, I would entertain a motion on the consent agenda. That's amended.
I assume move, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilor Quinell. Further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like, sign, and that motion does carry unanimously. We'll move on to item six. We'll breeze right through that. There's no public hearings this evening. We'll move to communications from our city attorney. Item 7A, consideration to approve a lease agreement with the Whitefish Community Center. Thanks, Angie.
Good evening, mayor and council members. So, as you all know, we own property located adjacent to K. Beller Park. I won't read you the legal description. I think we know where it all is. And back in 1976, I'm going to date myself, I was one, the city in Flathead County entered into an interlocal agreement allowing the county to construct a building on the city property to be used by the Golden Ager's, Whitefish Golden Ager's, Inc., they're now known as the Whitefish Community Center, to conduct activities benefiting the elderly and the community as a whole. So the interlocal agreement obligated us to lease the property either yearly or a five-year basis, and the community center to provide all labor and materials for construction as well for pay for all expenses related to the maintenance of the building. So way back when, we have entered into lease agreements with the Whitefish Community Center. Ours expired back in 2019. Unfortunately, COVID hit, and I don't know that we were all really worried about negotiating a rent agreement. So the proposed lease agreements mirrors the 2015 agreement, which is our latest agreement. The community center will be responsible for the maintenance of the building, as well as utility bills. We will be responsible for improvements to the property on the outside of the building, and they have added us as an additional insured. I think that is in the packet as well. One thing you folks may consider is the provision in the proposed lease agreement that allows the community center to renew the lease agreement with 60 days' notice. I think this property has been slated for affordable housing for quite some time. However, if we were to purchase the actual building, it would require us to pay at 2/3 of their appraised value, which may not be a financially viable option, although, please keep in mind we do own the land. So I think they've done a great job. I think they're doing a great service to the community. There's no immediate financial implications. I think we pay them maybe a dollar in rent a year. I think we pay them maybe a dollar in rent a year. So, um, anyway, we've met with them and staff does respectfully request that we approve the lease agreement.
Thank you, Angie. I would entertain any questions or a motion preferably. Ben?
So the, the lease here runs till 2029. And should they wish to renew, they would just send us a notice and it would automatically renew for how long?
Uh, correct, yeah, for another five years.
Okay. I mean, I don't think we have any immediate plans to put affordable housing there, but, I mean, would it make sense for us to preserve the options for future councils? Because I mean, that's, that provision could go on for the rest of time.
Yeah, and that, yeah, and that's kind of why I put it in my staff report. Maybe you guys could think about, you know, uh, 60 days' notice for a year renewal or something. And again, I don't know how appropriate that property is for affordable housing, but again, that's up to you guys and I'm happy to put that language in.
Go ahead, Giuseppe.
Just as a follow-up, uh, when both parties forgot or missed the mark and did not renew the lease, what's the legal standing at this point? Do they have a lease or they do not have a lease? Because if that expired, maybe letting expire, it's, it's a viable option in the future. So if we do not decide tonight, what's the legal standing between the two parties?
That's a good question. Um, you know, I, I would think that you guys would be hospitable to them continuing their lease, given the fact that their lease expired during COVID. But, I mean, i- if you guys want to change the lease, I think that's fine, too.
The reason I'm asking is because, uh, does that mean that the lease we had so far did not have an auto-renewal clause?
No, it's exactly the same renewal clause. So another 60, uh, another 60 days. So technically, they're probably good through 2024, 2025.
I'm just trying to find a way to say, let's not make it auto-renewable, but let's make it that the council in 2028, or whatever, has a meeting like this where the same leasing is presented and we can approve another, the, the council then can approve another five years.
Sure. Well, I, I think you can make that work with the lease now, but we just have to change the language a little bit.
How would that be written or modified, Angie? Just so we're clear with that change.
So I think you would change it in paragraph three. And I would say the term may be extended after providing 60 days' written notice with council approval prior to November 30th, 2029.
Steve?
So just add the words "with council approval" in paragraph three. Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay, seems like an easy change.
Ben? Anything further?
No, that's my question.
Okay. Giuseppe, does that satisfy your concern?
Well, I phrase it as a question, trying to understand the spirit of Ben's question. So yes, it does. I agree with Ben's concerns and I think this could address the concerns in the most minimal way.
Yeah, I, I, just to be clear, the community center does good things and we're not trying to hurt them at all. I just think five years is a long time and automatic five-year renewals is a very long time and things change in the world. And so, um, I think I agree with the proposal that it just comes back to the council in five years if they wish to renew. So I would make a motion to that effect, if that's okay.
Is there a second to the motion? Seconded by Councilor Fury. Rebecca, you had a comment? Yes, please.
So Angie, in your report, it says that, um, if we were to buy the building from the county, because they built it, that we'd, we would be bound to the two-thirds of the appraised value. But could we negotiate an amendment to the interlocal agreement to change that? And in the event that we did want to build, uh, affordable housing or more senior housing there? Because I know the Whitefish Housing Authority has thought about that and it's a great location for adding more housing for seniors. I think the last executive director was actually looking at doing that and actually having like family units in there as well. So can we negotiate away from that two-thirds of the appraised value?
You could try.
I think that's separate of what we're considering tonight, however. I mean, that's via the interlocal.
I, I think if the county were willing to do that, Rebecca, yeah, you could renegotiate that. I, and again, I don't know how willing the county would be to do that.
Andy?
So the two-thirds value is that of the building? Because we already own the property, right?
Yep.
Just of the building? Or no, the whole thing?
Is it though? No, I don't think it's the whole thing. I don't think it's the whole.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if we own the land, why would we pay two-thirds of the value to ourselves? Yeah, but the building has not the value.
Major structural issues.
I was gonna say, it's the land that has the value here. We're not talking, we're not talking like a great building by any means. I mean, it serves a purpose. I understand that, but...
Hold on, let me look.
I thought it was the full property in that the land was a third of the value at the time and they were going to build the building. So they say the full property value, it's two-thirds. And as time has gone on, unfortunately, you know, values go up. And so, um, is it the land or the building that costs more now? It's hard to say, but I could be wrong. I could, I could have read it wrong. I thought it was the full property appraisal, um, including the land and the building.
Yeah, is, uh, we might want to talk to him about that, I think. That's, I, I'm a little uncomfortable locking into that for five years, quite frankly. I mean, if that's...
I don't, yeah.
You know, if, if we, if we hold title to the land already, I don't, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
We do hold title to the land, for sure.
This lease is different than the interlocal agreement with, uh, the county, though. Because there is a, there's an interlocal agreement with the county to build the building and then this is a lease of the actual building to an entity. So I think the question is, would we buy it in the next five years or not? And then that's where you wouldn't want this lease to go to five years. But the time that I see us taking to negotiate a change to our interlocal agreement, something as significant as, you know, the value potentially, I guess that's the question, is could we get that done in five years?
Not going to happen in five years, probably. Exactly, you're right.
But is it something we could look into and start talking?
Never mind, never mind my comment, then.
We could start talking to the county, though. If that's the direction of the council, we could start talking to them about the interlocal agreement, though. At least start talking with Pete and see if they have interest in discussing it further.
I think that would be a good idea. But let's not hold up the lease here this evening on that point. Uh, further discussion or points? All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like, sign, and that motion does carry unanimously. We will move on to item 8A. You have Dana's written report enclosed with the packet. Any questions for Dana on her manager's report? Giuseppe?
Yes, Dana, I, I know you came to the airport, but I was wondering, was it February, February 12 when you met with the Chamber of Commerce?
No. Thank you. Don't know how February got in there, quite honestly. I must have been thinking budget or something. No, that was this month. So, um, literally last week, I was at the Chamber of Commerce. Thank you for catching that, Giuseppe.
Dana, anything additional to report on?
Uh, not this evening.
Great, thank you. We'll move on to item 8C, which is consideration to award a contract for the 2025 Montana Legislative Session Lobby Services. Dana?
Wonderful. Mayor and city council, in the packet on page 224, you have my staff report. In September, the city issued an RFP or RFQ, a request for qualifications for lobbying services during this upcoming legislative session. And, excuse me, on October 7th, the city council appointed Mayor Mulfield, myself, and city attorney Jacobs to the rating and selection panel. The city received four responses by our deadline in October. And all great, um, firms and candidates. We interviewed all four of them. But one rose to the top, Communications and Management Services. Their managing partner, Drew Geiger, he is identified as the primary lobbyist for CMS. You might hear that name and think, I've heard that name before. They're the company that recently did our wage market rate study. So city staff has had experience working with them. They've been a pleasure to work with and we really look forward to the opportunity, should council approve, to be able to work with them in the next legislative session. Drew comes with a great amount of experience when it comes to our Montana Legislature. Not only did he work as a research analyst, where he helps staff committees and draft legislative bills, but he's been a lobbyist now at the state for many years. Doesn't necessarily have municipal lobbying experience, but neither did the other, um, applicants for this. So the fiscal year '25 budget appropriates $28,000 for lobbying services for this next session. Based on the proposal we received and in discussion about the scope of services that would be needed, we anticipate that the contract would be around the $25,000 mark to include prep and wrap-up from the session, which is still well within the budget authority provided by council. We respectfully recommend that the city council authorize, myself as city manager, to negotiate and execute a contract with CMS for lobbying services for the 2025 Montana Legislative Session in an amount not to exceed $28,000. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Dana? Start with Rebecca and then Ben.
Yep, Dana, you said he doesn't have municipal experience. So who else is he representing? Because one, one thing I got some feedback from one of our representatives was that, um, the person we hired had conflicts, so they couldn't represent us at some of the hearings. And so I'm just wondering, do you know who else he's working with?
Yeah, um, he did provide that. The, the Gambler's Association is one, I believe it's the Gambler's Association. Hang on one sec, let me pull up his proposal. I know that he's worked a lot with the Gambler's Association. He, he came, um, actually highly recommended by the League of Cities and Towns as well. And so they view him as a, a great person who works behind the scenes and really focuses on the lobbying efforts. Maybe not so much speaking at committees, but that's something that Whitefish really needs. We're in a kind of a unique place, I think, at the legislature with, um, just the, the differing opinions that our community has compared to our state legislature. But I don't see that he has any, and he also said he has no anticipated conflicts of interest between, um, his current client base and the city joining on. In fact, not being part of municipal, uh, work is helpful because it's not like something where you have two municipal clients with different opinions on land use legislation, where you have to, you know, pick one or the other or completely abstain from it. So, um, I'm confident, um, his clients include, you know, Tourism Matters Montana, the Montana Car Rental Association. And he's done, uh, Human Resources Development Council and Association, Montana Cultural Advocacy. I know that there are some other ones that he's worked for, that's the firm. And so again, I don't, I didn't see any concerns with conflicts of interest. But as with all the other firms that applied, you know, they have process for determining when they would, when and how they would handle a conflict of interest. And we didn't have any, to my knowledge, from the last session. In fact, our conflict was more with the League of Cities and Towns, where we did not agree with their position and we, um, had a different position than our League of Cities and Towns did on bills. Thank you.
What, what sets CMS apart with my decision, which Dana articulated very well, is the fact that he spends a lot of time one-on-one with legislators versus providing public comment at committee meetings on behalf of the City of Whitefish. And I think that's going to be particularly important entering this new legislative session. And also what weighed heavily in my decision was the strong reference that they receive from the Montana League of Cities and Towns. So I, I agree with Dana that this is certainly the strongest applicant we had for the lobbying position and I would certainly encourage the council to motion to that effect.
Mr. Mayor, uh, we'll...
Oh, I have a question, Bill, if you're moving.
Yeah, um, when this, uh, item of the packet came to the interlake this morning, I started receiving phone calls. So I, I promised that I'd last few things. Dana, uh, how much do we pay for our membership to the seat, to the League of Cities and Towns?
So for fiscal year '25, our membership cost was $9,163. That has risen over the past couple of years, but to put in perspective, um, it's a per capita basis. So, um, when you look at cities like Missoula and Billings, over, I think it was through 2027, um, you know, there's going to be a cap of $66,000 and change that they will be paying compared to, to our amount, which I think will go up to around, you know, $18,000, depending on our, our per capita, uh, our, our population numbers that they're using, so...
So I understand that the, uh, league doesn't do just lobbying services, but they should be also doing lobbying, uh, for our municipality. And we're paying part of those $9,000 a year for that purpose. So I, I would wonder, uh, that's a different discussion, but evaluating those services. Now, let's talk about this $28,000. I have become the mill man and I know the different, uh, accounts in, in the city budget, but $28,000 is 35 cents per $1,000 of assessment value of a property. It's point 35 mil. So if I have a neighbor with a house assessed at $600,000, these $28,000 are $207 per year of, uh, tax money, taxpayers' money. And I'm asking, what do we want this lobbyist to provide to us? If I were to sell it?
We're, we're going to set our legislative priorities, Giuseppe, so that's going to be entirely the council's discretion, what that lobbyist focuses on on behalf of the City of Whitefish. That's the direction you will provide.
And, and my concern is that if, in the previous legislature, where we had the League of the Cities and we had a lobbyist and we, I don't think we managed to convey a single legislative priority, why do we think this time is going to be different?
I, number, yeah, I was going to say, so $240 cannot be correct. 207. I don't even see it being that much. I mean, when you look at our general fund budget of over $5 million, there's no way that the point 35 of a mil is going to be that much per household. I'll have to re, I can recalculate that for you. But, um, you know, I think the importance here is, you know, this legislative session, as with the prior one, is completely different than years past. There's over 5,000 bills, you know, that are, or 4,000, it was over 4,500, I think, last year, that were, um, introduced or requested and drafted and, and went through the process. This year, they're anticipating to continue to go up. Already today, I, I don't know today's numbers, but like a couple of weeks ago, they already had over 800 draft requests. You're, if, the league does lobby on our behalf and they have increased, uh, the staffing that they're going to have. But, um, you know, being able to lobby specifically for Whitefish issues, which the council will set priorities December 2nd, those kind of things, um, won't be done by the league necessarily. They do big picture. Senate Bill 382 is a good example. Whitefish wasn't necessarily on board with Senate Bill 382, but the league was pushing it forward. And so having the opportunity to have a lobbyist who has Whitefish-specific concerns versus overall cities across the entire state, and remember, they're representing cities from Billings to Whitefish to, um, little tiny cities on the east side, um, all having various, varying issues. It also supports staff. Quite honestly, I can't keep up with 4,000 bills, 5,000 bills and do my day job on top of it. It just isn't realistic, uh, for me to be able to provide... It just isn't realistic for me to be able to provide the best service to our community. So having that support, and like I said, it's going to be $25,000. The reason we put it to 28 is if there was something that came up in, during the legislative session that required an excessive amount of work, we could utilize those additional $3,000. But even at $25,000, that's less than what we paid last session.
Last session, then, we paid $10,000 for the lobbyist?
Twenty-six.
We paid $26,000. Well, can you give us one legislative priority that we push through successfully with that lobbyist?
I feel like the one on short-term rentals, that was going to allow short-term rentals in all residential districts. Having our lobbyists there, talking to them, them keeping me apprised of where we were. I remember sitting, I was in Helena, I think I was at the mayor and executives conference, and it was up for second reading in the House or the Senate, I can't remember. And I sent out emails, she was sending out emails, we were trying to get the word out to get people to communicate and not just go through the city, but having that real-time information helped me get that information out so that people could communicate. That died on second reading on the floor, and it would have passed. That was, that was the last opportunity to get it to fail. And I know that it probably wasn't just Whitefish, but there was, that would have been a very, you know, significant impact to the city, had that not gone through. So, that one, and I do believe that our lobbyist worked, you know, alongside the League of Cities and Towns on making sure the impact fee bill that was really directed toward Whitefish became workable for our community. There's a lot of stuff that happens in the background that you don't see at the committee level, obviously, that's, it's doing those discussions upfront, making sure that the draft language that's coming forward by the sponsors is language that, you know, all parties can agree to, or if there's issues in them, maybe you could throw out suggestions of, hey, I see what you're trying to do here, but what if you went about it this way? And I think this session is going to be very important because property taxes is going to be a very hot topic. Property taxes, as we all know, there's already recommendations. Land use is always an issue, and then we also have, there's some other, you know, topics like Medicaid expansion that are coming forward. So you'll be able to set your priorities during our next work session that we have, and it might not be a work session, excuse me, it's going to be an agenda item, we're running out of work sessions. But we'll be able to talk about those priorities. But I do feel like some of those bills were affected by our comments. And if anything, we provided education on really what would happen to a city.
Ben.
I have a comment, would you like a motion, though?
Please.
I would move to approve the contract with Communication and Management Services as proposed.
Is there a second to the motion? Seconded by Counselor Cornell.
No, Giuseppe, I understand the concerns about having a municipal lobbyist, but I look at it this way. Whitefish is one of the most unique communities, possibly one of the most unique communities in the entire state. The issues that we have here, I think, are different than most other cities have, they're definitely different than what the Montana League and Towns is doing. And, you know, there's a lot happening to legislature these days that has had some very significant impacts on our community. I don't know the math earlier, but I'm, I mean, it's the equivalent of like $3 per citizen for one year, you know? And so, I think it's, it's a minimal expense as far as the city budget is concerned, very minimal. And if one good idea gets done out of it, then it's worth, easily worth the cost of admission. And so, and I think, honestly, to help with Dana's bandwidth on, I know how much time she was spending on dealing with the last legislative session. And my question that I didn't ask earlier was going to be, is this going to help you with that? Hopefully it does. But anyway, I think we should approve it, and my motion is to move ahead with it as proposed. Thanks.
Further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that motion does carry unanimously. Thank you, Dana. We'll move on to Item 9A, consideration of a request from the Northwest Montana Community Land Trust to release the deed restriction on 711 Trail View. Kim.
Hello, I'm Kim Morisake, Executive Director for Northwest Montana Community Land Trust in Kalispel, and representing all of Flathead County. I am here again to chat with you about deed restrictions at the Trail View development off of Monigan Road. In the last 12 months, we've been able to bring seven houses in that development into the land trust and lower the purchase price on those houses by 60 to 90 to $120,000 each. So, I didn't expect to be back here so soon to chat with you again, but 711 Trail View has become available for purchase. The current homeowner would like to have it, would like to sell it by the end of the year, if possible. I do have three or four potential candidates to buy it, and so I'm here to request that you lift your deed restrictions so that I could have the land trust take it in as a ground lease restriction instead, exactly the way we've done it with the other properties in Trail View. And on top of that, if the City of Whitefish has the funds to do it, if you were able to contribute $30,000, again, to the purchase of the land underneath this house, it would assist the land trust in putting together a, an attractive financial package that would allow somebody below 80% AMI to purchase the property, in combination with HBA money or without the HBA money, somebody between 80 and 140% area median income.
Any questions for Kim? Ben.
How much would the land trust be contributing to this?
So, I hadn't planned to be buying one more house this year, so I didn't have any funds sort of set aside for it. I was thinking more into the 2025. But if the person who purchases the house is below, is below 80% AMI, I have $31,000 of HBA money still set aside that we could use. I am planning, I've got several ideas where this money can come from, so I haven't quite nailed it down yet, but another $30,000 either from the land trust's bank account or some other private donors. And then, if the City of Whitefish were to bring $30,000, then that would be either $60,000 or $90,000.
Do we have $30,000, Dana?
Yes. As Daniel came forward, actually, a lot of the spurred conversation between Daniel and I with Housing Whitefish regarding their needs for their rental assistance program. And so, we do have $30,000 available. That would still leave about $150,000 of funding that the city council could utilize since Housing Whitefish isn't going to be seeking additional funds until next fiscal year. So I do, I do feel comfortable that the council has the budget authority to provide $30,000 for this unit. If you're interested in proceeding, we would do what we've done in the past and prepare a contract that releases the deed restrictions and documents the $30,000, and I could bring that forward at your next council meeting. But I do know Kim is gone, so it'll be a Dana show.
Sorry, I'm going to Chicago for Thanksgiving, and I won't be back at your next council meeting.
I would entertain a motion. Steve.
I just have a question. Do we have a bigger plan for the, for Trail View? Because it seems like this piecemeal thing is kind of not maybe the most effective way to go about doing this.
In, in the case of Trail View, those houses have all been sold. So people own them, whether they're land trust homeowners or deed-restricted homeowners or market-rate homeowners. So, we don't know until a deed-restricted homeowner announces that they want to sell their house, and then they contact Whitefish Housing Authority, and then Whitefish Housing Authority calls me and says, these folks would like to sell their home, would the land trust be interested in purchasing it? And then I talk with the people who would like to sell their home, and if they're interested, we buy it. If, so, and that's the only way to go forward with Trail View. I would very much like for the land trust to have a long-term plan to work in the City of Whitefish in a number of ways, either at the Depot Park, if there's an opportunity to partner there in some way, or if there were, say Jerry Dunker does another development or any other developer, kind of work with them from the beginning with a bigger comprehensive plan of how it would go forward. There's just, the time isn't quite right for any of those things just yet.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sorry.
Further questions for Kim? Ben, motion? Please.
I would move to approve the Northwest Community Land Trust's request to release the deed restriction, as well as to provide the $30,000 from the Affordable Housing Fund as a contribution towards this effort.
Thank you, Ben. Is there a second to the motion? Seconded by Counselor Norton. Further discussion? Ben.
Yeah, so, I'm glad you're back. I think every time you come back, I say, keep coming back.
Okay, thank you.
And I mean that, because, I mean, look, this is, we have limited funds available for affordable housing, and I get that, but this is a way to take, get $3 of value for every $1 we put in. And I think those opportunities, when they come by, are an effective use of funds in this manner. I think the project is a perfect place to do it. And so, I, as I've said before, I hope you continue to bring these forward, and I will be here to support them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that motion does carry unanimously. Thanks, Kim.
Thank you.
Have fun in Chicago.
Thanks.
Good. We'll move on to Item 9B, to discuss changes to the city charter as approved by the voters regarding council compensation and to provide direction to staff. Before I open it up to council, in an effort to avoid going down the rabbit hole this evening, since we don't have many public present, Dana, I would specifically ask you, what direction are you looking for this evening, sparing the details for when this does come back to the council for discussion, resolution, public hearing?
Great, thank you, John. So with the charter amendment that was approved by the voters of Whitefish, it is effective January 1st. And because of that, initially, I thought we could hold the public hearing in December. Now we'll be looking at, you can hold the public hearing that January 6th meeting, because that is now effective. So, if the council is interested in considering having a public hearing for the public to comment on proposed benefits or wages, then we would need some time to have that advertised. We would also need a work session so that we know what to draft the ordinance, or, excuse me, resolution as. And so, if we just go back from January 6th, if you can give direction tonight, if you want to hold a public hearing January 6th, I would need that direction tonight, or no later than December 2nd, so we can have it advertised. Our December 2nd meeting work session is booked with committee and board interviews. This is a busy time for making sure our committees are full. So you'd be looking at holding your December 16th meeting. Often, council cancels the second meeting in December. This year, though, the 16th is quite a bit further from December 25th and Christmas than some years. So you could, so I guess the direction I'm looking for is, do you want to hold a public hearing? And if so, what date? And when would we hold the work session? And then, during the work session is when we can talk about and get direction on what you want that resolution to look like, so that that discussion doesn't have to occur tonight as well, in full detail.
I guess my personal opinion is, you know, this just passed a number of weeks ago by quite a slim margin, actually, 57, or 53 to 47%. I think it would be, behoove us to maybe wait and give adequate time for a work session to review what the options are, you know, given what the ballot language stated, and provide staff some time as well to prepare the direction that we provide to them during that work session. So, I don't see this coming to a public hearing, probably not even in January, but certainly we could shoot for February. I don't think time is very critical at this point, given we have an election two years away where this would become effective, or the council could elect to make it effective this term, that's for further discussion at a future date. So, I would take some direction back to Dana regarding the council's wish on all the above. Ben.
I just have one comment, in terms of timing, I believe the registration for the next municipal election is in May of next year. And in my head, it seems like it would be nice to have this resolved one or another prior to people choosing whether they're going to run or not.
Well, I certainly think we'll handle this before May. Yeah, absolutely. Rebecca?
Why wouldn't we do it January 6th?
I don't think we have enough time to hold a work session between now and January 6th to hold a public hearing and, on a resolution. We could hold a work session on January 6th, if that's the council's prerogative.
Yeah, I think it would be good to start there and then start, because I've been investigating how people develop compensation policies for councils, talk to Sherry about, you know, a living wage and how much it costs to pay for our health insurance. But I think we should start working on it instead of putting it off for a long time. I mean, the voters did approve it.
They did, and I agree with you.
And so, we, it is our job to make sure that it happens, so I don't see why we would wait on it, to be honest, when we have...
Well, my point was, I would rather not hold a second meeting in December...
Yeah, well, we could just do it...
...to host a work session to get this on an agenda at the first meeting in January. Guess that was my point.
So do it on January 6th?
If that's the council's direction.
Is there room on January 6th?
You know, currently, we have an update from Tishler Bice on the transportation impact fee, but he only needed 20 minutes or so, and, and so I think we could at least start with that work session, and then if it carries into the regular meeting, we could probably accommodate that.
Giuseppe?
Yes, my, mine was more of a question, first of all, personally, I don't feel the urgency, because as you all know, I believe that this should not apply to us sitting here. So, we could do it anytime before May. I fully agree with Ben's position that we should publicize what the deal is. But my question is, say the council decided that whatever compensation is decided should apply with, effective immediately, do we have the budget? Or is it a mute point?
I don't think we need to cross that bridge yet.
I don't think we need to discuss that tonight, Giuseppe.
Okay.
It's a good question, but maybe one that's better left for a work session. Steve.
I, you know, my, my personal belief on this is that we should act quickly, and I, I don't think the, the, I don't think the, how close the election was should matter. It passed, so we can take action. I don't think we should rush into it and try to get it all done before January either. I think if we start on January 6th with a work session with maybe some ideas about what, what we could be compensated, what we should be compensated, I think that would be the starting point, January 6th, and hopefully get something to, out to the public in February, early February, hopefully the first meeting in February. And then we can talk about other things, like whether it takes effect immediately or after the next election. But I do, I do want to just say that, you know, there's been a lot made about whether or not this was an election issue, and it was, and I've looked back at the videos of the different meetings that I attended and was interviewed, and it, it came up, not only in the council forum, Rebecca brought it up in, in the very first council debate that we had, and then it also came up in the forum, where Frank and Rebecca and I were interviewed by, by Ed, Doctor. So, I do think that it was a campaign issue, and I think we should, we should take this seriously. It's time for, for this council to, to take on the fact that the work that we do is valuable, and, and we should value that in some way, and we need to, we need to address that sooner than later, I think.
Rebecca.
So, just some history, the Local Government Review Commission actually looked at this 20 years ago, because Rhonda told me when Sarah was on it, Fitzgerald, they actually asked, the commission decided that they weren't going to recommend compensation. And then when I was on it, 11 years ago, I was the only one that thought we should be looking at it. The whole idea is to incentivize all levels of volunteers to be participating in leadership. So, I know some of us are taking this quite personally, but... but really, it's about the concept of how we keep people engaged in the public process. And so, I do think it's important that we get on board, because I've been waiting 11 years for it. But also, it's going to be a, kind of a big discussion about how we do it. So, I, I think we're doing it for the next council, the next mayor, you know? I just think we should look at it as a policy change.
Further discussion, or is that adequate direction, Dana, to advertise for a work session on January 6th?
That's adequate.
Okay. Thanks very much. We'll move on to Items, what is this? 9C, consideration to appoint an elected official or staff member to serve as the ex officio non-voting member for the Local Government Review Study Commission. Thinking about this, I think it's important for us not to appoint an elected official to serve in this capacity. And I would recommend to the council that you appoint Michelle to serve in that capacity, representing staff as a non-voting ex officio member. There's no one better that knows the charter than Michelle, given her tenure here at the city. So, if Michelle's willing, which I've talked to her about that, and I believe she is, that would be my recommendation to council, but it's certainly your decision.
I support that decision, Mayor.
I'll take that as a motion. Is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Quinell. Further discussion?
I think just one, one quick comment, and I don't know if it happened 10 years ago or 11 years ago now, but 20 years ago when it was done, no one from up here sat as an ex officio member on there, which was a good thing, but that group of people did take the time to interview everybody that sits up here. And I think that I would encourage the new committee to do that same thing, because otherwise, they're operating in a vacuum. They don't know what it's like to actually do the job. They don't know what it really entails, because they've never done it. And I think that's an important thing that I would encourage, Michelle, to have you encourage them to do that, so.
Good point, Andy. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign. Thanks very much, Michelle, for volunteering. We made most of the appointments to the volunteer boards during our work session. The CDB appointments will be made at the December 2nd meeting following one additional interview. With that said, consideration of canceling the second meeting in December, what's your preference there? If we can, nothing pressing, Dana? Just showing of hands if you'd like to cancel the second meeting in December? Surprise, surprise. And you do have a letter from Dave Carmilovich regarding input on council compensation. Thanks to David for providing that letter. And we'll move on to counselor comments. Who would like to begin tonight? Why don't we start with Andy? If you're ready?
Yeah, not too much. The only thing, though, thinking is, because we talk about it all the time, and it comes around with FWP and our dear, dear problems in town. And now that we have CWD less than eight miles from downtown, I think we need to maybe get a little update from FWP again at some point in the work session here after the first of the year and see what that potentially means to us, as I'm watching all the stupid bucks walk around town right now, dazed and confused for a different reason. But I don't want to see them laying down and dying in my front yard, thank you. And so, I think we kind of need to understand what's, what's happening, because it's, that is a big change, quite frankly. And I think that it's, we need to reconsider it again, so.
Rebecca? Thanks, Andy.
Yep, I just was wondering what's going on with the Big Mountain annexation. We haven't really talked about that for a long time. Is it still going? Our staff is still working on property identification, and so, we're working on that. I've asked Michelle to take the lead on that with our GIS coordinator. And so, hopefully, we'll be able to get that information pulled together. You know, this, the annexation isn't as simple as like, here's all the properties, it's wholly surrounded, everybody's coming. The actual agreement has areas that are exempt from the annexation document that was approved, and so, we're having to identify where those are. And then, once we have an idea of all the properties that are subject to the agreement, then we'll look at properties that are wholly surrounded if that annexation were to go through, just so that we have a good idea of the properties. Then, we can calculate potential revenue from that to see if that revenue can then support the services we have to provide when annexing. But aside from that, we'll also be working on creating a, kind of a working group with Michelle and myself, and then we'll have an elected official who, or two, that want to help participate in that process, especially once we get the properties identified and start to have discussions with the Big Mountain Fire District and the Big Mountain Sewer District. And then, on top of that, there is some planning that's required to go as part of that agreement. You know, we look at the extension of services plans, and then there's requirements that zoning, what they have there, has to be in place when they're annexed. They have to be allowed to do those things, but then, it doesn't stop us in the future from changing zoning. So, it's very, a very complicated process, so. But we are working on it, but it's definitely going to be taking time.
Okay, I just haven't heard about it for a while, so I thought I'd just see if we were on track at some point to, to do the groups. I, I don't know how other people feel about sending a letter to the county commissioners, what Steve was talking about, as a city, but we do have a good experience working with neighbor works building Elpenglow 1. And maybe that would be something that we could put in a letter. Everybody's not into it, okay. It was about the HB 819. Yeah? Okay. And I guess that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thanks, Rebecca. Ben? Thank you, Ben. Steve?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I do want to just say a couple of things about HB 819. Just underscore what Kim said, that the county commissioners are on the verge of walking away from $9 million, potentially $9 million worth of funding for affordable housing countywide. And who knows how much of that would be here, but we all understand that affordable housing is not just a Whitefish issue, it's a county-wide issue. So, we have a lot of really strong people in this community who are in favor of affordable housing, workforce housing, whatever we want to call it. And just please make your comments known to the, to the county commissioners. You know it's a big issue when Kalispel School District gets involved in it, and they sent out a letter today with a sample letter that we could send in, because we are, you know, you know my struggles with the school district down there and the funding issues that, that go along with all the stuff down there. The other thing I wanted to say is, I'm going to Colorado for Thanksgiving, and I was thinking, oh, maybe we should go down to Telluride and ski. $245 for a day pass there, and I was like, whoa, I wonder how much a season passes there, $3,000. So, we live in a unique and spectacular place, and we have access to a lot of the mountain community, things that, amenities and outdoor activities that people just don't have access to anymore because of the cost of it. Could you imagine paying $3,000 instead of $789 or whatever it was this year for a ski pass? So, I just want to, you know, put some things in perspective here as we head into Thanksgiving and remind us to be thankful for some of the things that we have. Even though it feels like things have slipped away from us recently, we still have a lot to be thankful for.
Thank you, Steve. Giuseppe?
Steve, you mentioned my favorite holiday since I became American, and, and that's Thanksgiving. And all I wanted to say is, since I won't see any of you officially here till Thanksgiving, I want to say that I'm thankful to be working with all of you and with you up here, and Frank too, even if he's livestock right now. And I wish everybody a beautiful Thanksgiving with your dear ones or whatever, with your skis up and where you're going skiing. Thank you.
Thanks, Giuseppe. Anything further from staff, Dana?
I'll just make one comment on the HB 819. I did forward the email from Kim that includes a draft letter and more information about that to city council and department heads, so they can distribute it as they, as you see fit to others.
Great, thank you very much. Thanks, directors. Thanks, council. I have nothing further. We are adjourned.